A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, good morning.
Dave is on.
Morning.
He's on vacation.
No, no.
Medical, the active pipes.
Yeah, important. Call me the order, uh, we need to amend the agenda per our discussion here.
Hello, move to amend the agenda and drop canvassing of city and school elections until tomorrow morning at eight AM.
Um, you want to stay hotel?
Or move, move, move it to, move it to tomorrow morning at eight AM.
One second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Tomorrow morning, eight AM, canvas elections. Okay, approval of the minutes from eleven four and eleven seven, which you have a copy of.
I read through them, everything looks good, so I would move to accept the minutes.
Have a second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Minutes approved for two meetings. Alright, general public concerns. You might be the general public today, Andy.
Well, I guess the assumption is to dig a ditch out around my property line. These are maps.
Awesome. They are.
And Rick, do you want to show them where you want to dig the ditch up? Or, I mean, sorry, Ben.
Okay, so our intention to dig a ditch is basically from John Warren's pit. It's over here.
Back here, here.
To the north through the curves. North, we won't dig anything through Joe's acreage where the trees are at. Um, but dig ditch further north, and I believe, once you get to this point here, it all flows north to the river. Um, what we're intending on doing, I guess, was to dig about a one-foot deep ditch. I know that's what you and I had talked about at your place this spring. Um, right now, that whole stretch, the road is roughly four inches lower than the field on both sides. So, the road is acting as the ditch, it holds the water and it might usually one of the last things to drain, especially in the curves. Um, so we're just trying to create a, a location lower than the road so that the road will drain.
As a positive.
As, to positively, to positively drain the roadway, um.
Can I interject, Tom?
Sure.
Per, yeah, you said it exactly, but you might want to define, rephrase, dig a ditch, it's more of a, kind of a modify.
We're, we're trying, we're trying to.
It's kind of a modify.
We're not gonna, we're not looking at digging like a four-foot ditch, like standard road section. Um, we looked at that at one time without possibly digging a ditch and building the roadway up. Complications with that are, if you raise, if you raise the roadway up too much, you're gonna affect the water to the point where it will affect the town of Bradgate and John Warren's acreage. Um, Dave's got shots in town for Bradgate, so we know that elevation. We don't have shots at John Warren's to be able to tell how much we could raise the roadway up. Um, I guess we looked at this as a, uh, the, the cheapest and simplest option to try and improve the roadway through that stretch. Um, there's no stopping Mother Nature. It, it's still gonna, the river's still gonna come up, it's still gonna go over the road. Um, we're just trying to improve, I guess, the stretch of road so that the road isn't the last thing to drain.
Okay. As you can see, this is one of the lowest parts in the whole area. The river comes over the little ravine right in here. You dig a ditch, the water's gonna stand, you can't control the water table. When the river's up, it's up. The water comes up through the ground, you're not gonna change that, like, like right here. This is all from the water coming up. The road has never washed out except for in a couple places, and really, it actually never washed out. And partially, that is because the, each side holds the road together. We have, every time we get a new supervisor, uh, excuse me, not supervisor, a new engineer, and, and this isn't, has nothing against you. They wanted to dig the ditch out, but then they changed their minds because it's been like this for the last forty, fifty years. The road has stayed in place, it's never totally washed the whole road out. There's a little spot here that, that the last part of it drains, and a little spot here that the last part of it drains. You're not gonna control the water table, and if you dig a ditch, it, away from the road, it's not, the road's not gonna be supported because it's all sand there. You're getting, end up with ruts.
So, can I ask something?
Sure.
So, last spring when Warren's here in here and they're, they're mad because we aren't hauling rock after load after load after load to try to raise the rock or.
Well, this is down here on the curve.
I know, but we're between a rock and a hard place.
I understand that.
How do, who do we listen to?
Well, I guess the choice is simply your guys' choice. If you want to dig it out, there's nothing I can do to stop it. I'm just trying to explain to you why that road is still there even though the water floods every single year practically. There's not very many years left that it doesn't flood. And partially, that's because of, the river's all filled in. There's patterns hiling, it's all going to the river. So, the river's not gonna really go down unless something changes in the river.
Right.
It's only gonna keep flooding year after year after year. I mean, there's like three years, or three times this summer that it's all flooded like this, and then it went down, and then it come back up. But you're not gonna control the water table. When the river's up, it's up, and it comes up and through this part here. This, this very rarely ever dries out unless we have a dry, dry year. And my husband mowed, ended up mowing all the weeds when it did get dry because they were like this tall, and it was like a tunnel going down the road. So, how can you, you don't want us farming up next to the road, which does perfectly fine, you should not be farming up next to the road either. But you did a ditch, and the weeds will come, it'll stay wet, and you won't be able to mow it.
Like I said, I, well, that, I was out there then, and what she said this correctly from the get-go. That's where you gotta get away from the digging a ditch, because the ditch is.
Right.
One of the dimensions of actual ditch generally then.
I, I mean, the, uh, the general impression of a ditch is usually three or four foot deep. Uh, two to one slopes from the road down to the bottom of the ditch. Uh, five foot, six foot ditch bottom, and then another one to one on the back slope. I mean, what we're.
And we're not proposing that.
We're looking at like a, a one-foot swale, I guess, would be a better.
I would call it a modified depression.
Yeah.
I mean.
I mean, you're still gonna be able to drive farm equipment through it with, without having driveway or driveway pipe.
That was my question.
Other considerations that we were looking at, um, north of Sandy's son's place, Joe's, we were looking at putting crosspipe underneath the roadway and building, uh, that portion of the road up six to eight inches so that Joe should be able to get from town to his house without having to drive through standing water. We do have an agreement in place with the city of Bradgate that we, that we can dig inside city limits. But Sandy's right, I mean, uh, this area does flood from ground up. I mean, it percolates up through, up through the soil. It is a sandy, uh, difficult soil to work with. I don't know that this is the right answer for, for this stretch of road. She's right, nothing has been done in the last fifty years. I'd say it's one of the poorest roads that we've got in the county, and it's also one of the highest complaint roads in the county.
Well, that's because of my son, partially.
So, I guess, what, what we do is we, we, we look at particular stretches of, of roadway or, or high traffic, high complaint. Uh, is there anything that we can do for minimal cost? This would be an option, but if you guys tell us not to do it, we'll move our equipment to a, a, a different stretch of road and, and, uh, we've still got plenty of projects to do, hopefully, before the ground gets too hard.
I would like you guys, I'll give you these maps, I would like you guys to think about this before we do it. Before you make a decision on whether you're gonna do it.
Because you, you think doing this is gonna make the road worse, is what you're saying?
Yeah, I think, I think it's gonna weaken the sidewalls of the road, and you're, somebody's gonna go off to the edge and dig rut right into the road. Right now, it holds, it, it really does, and the only reason it washes out in those places is because the traffic through the water is forcing the, the road to wash out in spots and making holes and stuff.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
You said your son is the biggest complaint, or what, what does he complain about?
Well, he has livestock down here. We have to get from there to feed the other livestock, and either way, he's gotta go through water.
Standing water.
Um, either way, it's either water through here, or it's the water through here. And then, when you get down to Warren's side where the ditch was dug out, every year it floods there, every year it gets above that road, it washes all the rock down into the ditch.
Can he go another route to get to it, is that all?
He, he's either gotta go this way or he's gotta go that way.
Otherwise.
So, this way, he goes up on the highway and goes around.
And that, that, and that's definitely one of the reasons why we.
I mean, if, if I did.
Took away the idea of a four-foot ditch.
Stop using some equipment, cattle lot down there, I sure would've.
With army equipment, you wouldn't feel that.
Well, I gotta, this changed quite years.
My personal opinion, if this was brought up, at least he would have an option not going through water with these equipment or trucks or whatever. I think that would solve the problem, that way, they wouldn't have to go this way at all when the rock, when the water's up high.
Um, in light of that, if Ben and I had talked about this, and you've mentioned it, the culvert, uh, you know, between Joe's acreage and Bradgate and raising, raising the road, could you still do that?
You'd have to dig somewhat of a ditch.
I mean, with it, right now, there is.
All this culvert, I think we can get as a twelve, but standardly, we don't use anything less than like a fifteen.
But you could maybe go to a twelve.
We could possibly go to a twelve inch, but I mean, what you're gonna want is, you're gonna want something that can carry the water.
Well, it's go to fifteen, but raise, raise road a little bit more would be more beneficial.
And, and Dave's got the numbers, he's got the survey as far as how much we needed to bring up. Uh, I know last year, what was it, Sandy, six inches to twelve inches of water that Joe had to drive through to get to his house?
Oh, yeah, it's sometimes more than that. I know he's had it, whatever goes out in your truck when you're running through water, he's had that done a couple times. Um, years ago, to keep the water from off the road from here, we had put up a little, little, uh, what do you call it?
Berm.
Berm here, because otherwise, when the water comes down from Bradgate, it, it drains behind Bradgate and comes across and through here. So, to keep the water off the ditch when that happens, they put up a little berm here. Now, when the water comes up here and eventually goes over the road, it'll, it'll come across the road, it stops at that berm until it gets high enough to go over the berm. So, there is a little berm there, otherwise, this water here would be sitting on the road.
Well, that could be, still that stretch you talked about, possibility of a culvert, raising the section of the road, is still doable without.
Doing the digging, the ditching.
Without the other depression digging thing further south there, basically.
So, you're wanting us to just dig a ditch from Joe's house north in through town?
Well, we're, I don't know where you, where you.
Culvert through the river.
Yeah.
How you would go through, I mean. How you're, you're gonna have to dig your, your one-foot swale or whatever north of Joe's house to get the water to run back north where the channel runs out to the river.
I don't think so much as it to get the water to run somewhere, I think when it gets high enough, have it be able to go underneath or however, so it doesn't going over the road. And I'm not even saying that, I, I mean, I don't know what the correct answer is. I know the river will come up to both sides of the driveway, and the house is a little. And you can see where the, this whole stretch here is the highest part of everything. And then, this little corner here, I mean, I just don't want water standing so weeds and everything else can come up in it so we can't mow it, keep it down.
Is that other thing that you had mentioned about near Warren's, that other curve?
Yeah, I talked to John Warren on the phone last week. Um, I'm supposed to meet with him one day this week out there about the possibility of putting a pipe in, in the curve east of his place that will carry quite a bit more water instead of filling the ditch and cutting that corner out. And then, he's gonna look at, uh, putting some sort of a waterway in, out of his field to channel that water rather than just being widespread.
Open.
Open, creating himself an open ditch that'll run to the river, so. He'll call me sometime this week when it works to meet on that portion, but that's separate.
Right, but that, that's a positive. All of this was thought up, thought out to be a positive, help, a positive for the road. No one knows for sure. If you leave it as it is, we, we have historical, uh, evidence of what happens.
And it, like I said, you're, you're not gonna stop Mother Nature, I mean, the river's still gonna come up, it's still gonna go over the road. Uh, you don't wanna build the road up too high at the point where it's cutting. Uh, you don't wanna dig too deep of a ditch so that when our son is hauling feed from the place to the cattle lot that if he went off of the road, he would fall into a ditch.
Yeah, you don't want to.
You, you don't, you don't wanna create that, Sandy's right, I mean, this is sandy material, there is, there's no precedent for trying to build a successful roadway when the base is poor.
And we're trying to dig it up a qualified ditch, that, that is out of the question.
Right, that's why, that's why we hold that idea.
And this has been going on for, oh, this is the end.
Eight hundred years.
So, yeah, right. So, this isn't like something new, so it's like, if you build there even though knowing that this is gonna be an issue down the road, and so we gotta find the most economical for the whole county of how to correct it, correct?
Well, no, we're, we're.
Well, that's just it, so it's a no-win situation, correct?
This, this isn't a corrective action, this is a, uh, meet in the middle ground.
Maybe hopefully, profit.
Band-aid that will help both the road and the people that use the road.
How many people use this road?
You'd be surprised.
I, I think there, there's quite a few, I mean, this is.
It's the back road.
A back road. This is a.
Yeah.
Been for twenty years.
And touch the bottom and that's mud, so.
I know they did a big study on the dam and the river last year, the state did. We really haven't heard much from them since they've done that study. So, I'm sure there's talk somewhere about it, but like you say, we're not in control. Even though we do own the dam, we don't have control over it, which is ridiculous, but.
Well, different factions and then, yeah, that's not our complete jurisdiction, like Rick said. I have a, just to think about this, and that's fine with me, but A, there is still right of way even though there's no ditch. So, you had mentioned yourself, I think it's gonna be beneficial to maintain the right of way. It's not a ditch like we'd normally like to maintain, but do not farm up to the road. That's, you know, that's it, that's everybody, that's, you know, that's a stickler thing, especially for me, because there's places where there are maintainable ditches, but you can't maintain a ditch on the farm.
And I told you that the spring, that they would not farm up next to the road. We plant some kind of hay or grass so that they can be mowed or veiled or something. Because when you're driving down a gravel road and you got weeds or corn, whatever, up so high, you can't see the deer come out, and you feel like you're just driving down a town.
Yeah, theoretically, road maintenance wise, the secondary roads does mow the road shoulders.
We do. Uh, they drive three times a year, drive all roads twice a year.
There you go. Yep. So that's.
Twice a year. Mine's got mowed twice a year. And I do mow.
This year, we struggle with broken, broken down tractors quite a bit, but I mean, that's our.
That's our goal.
That much, you know, we talked about, and I know it's a separate deal, you're gonna visit John Warren. I would suggest the, part of the, little bit of raising the road, you know, closer to Bradgate, with the culvert, as an option, if that's something that looks to be a little bit more doable, positive, just release that area. The rest of it, the thing of it is, the county can do the best job possible of maintaining what's there. We're all in agreement, we can't control Mother Nature, the river, and the bad soil conditions. But I understand where Ben is coming from a hundred percent, that when you get these vehement phone calls about the water, which there again, we've all are in agreement, we can't control, and you have concern about it being there, and not being able to go through it, and we, as the county, and the secondary roads, and the engineer, no one's a miracle worker. You know, like you said, a lot of this hasn't been a problem up until more recent history. Occasionally, yes, water went over the road, but we had more dry conditions. When you have what we've been having, that's where it's been at the forefront lately.
No, I know.
Because it's been so ungodly wet.
I know that.
It just will not dry out.
I think most of, um, I think a lot of Adam's argument was that he gets soft in spots along that Lannis road, when the river's up, because you got water on both sides of the road. So, it's gonna get soft, it's gotta go somewhere when you're traveling on it. It's gonna cause wherever the ground is soft, it's gonna give way, so the heat wants rock put on it. You gotta have something so you can drive along there with his machinery. And you're gonna have that in a few spots there, too. Wherever the water's up, it's saturated there, you know, the rock can't hold forever, but.
I think that.
This year, this year, we hauled twenty loads of rock along this stretch of road, which is about four times what we normally do for the length of road. I mean, we typically do about ten to twelve loads per mile. This was twenty and about.
Twenty load of rock from where?
From the corner east of John Warren's into Bradgate. So, it'd be everything, everything in your picture there.
Wow, what's the rock?
But that's the scouring effect of the river and the water, and the fact that it was on there so much, it.
Right, and a portion of that, I mean, a good portion of that rock was paid for by FEMA.
So, I mean, that gets back to, I think.
Are you sure twenty loads just from that corner there?
Yeah.
Because I watched the trucks go down my road there. And yeah, you probably had a lot of trucks going down, they dumped in a few different spots, but that section by Lannis is there.
From Lannis is, I don't know on that one, this would be just on the portion that you've got photographed. Lannis is was a different spot, I know we hauled some rock, but I don't know how much rock. We've got it logged, because it was all FEMA.
FEMA, so we keep track of that.
Well, who would everyone like to leave this, and I mean, this is the parties involved. We got everybody here, so I'm open to hear where you wanna do it.
Well, like I said, I mean, if you guys can wait.
That's what I would recommend, just wait on it.
I'd recommend everybody drive in the stretch of road before you guys come to a decision. It sounds like we're supposed to get warm weather again, so.
Yeah, next week's gonna be nice.
Ditching is still a possibility, and we've got plenty of other work to keep aside.
Plenty of other ditches that are more complex than this, but you have on your agenda.
And we've got razor rail repair and cross pipes reset, so.
Okay. Alrighty, that's a little deal, we'll take a look at it, think about it for a week.
That's fine.
Put it on the agenda for next week. We're leaving, alright.
That's fine, perfectly fine. You can have the pictures if you like.
Well, they are very nice pictures, so if you don't, yeah, very good reference. Always nice to be able to look at what you're talking about, so.
Was that from a plane or a drone?
That was a drone, it was a Bill Cran's drone.
Oh.
They did a nice job.
Yeah, they did.
Did a very nice job. Well, we'll leave it at that, I guess. We're not gonna go do something else, obviously, we've got plenty to do.
We've got plenty of other.
We've got plenty to do. And that, Sandy said that was agreeable, but thanks for coming in, that's the best way to do it. And, you know, if there is a concern, road wise, the best person to always talk to is the engineer, the related. I think, I'm not gonna speak for you, but I think we all appreciate, if there's a concern, that it gets addressed to the correct person or people, versus just being mad about it.
Other supervisors, or even, I don't know, you guys probably don't wanna talk to Paul Jenkins, but, I mean, he wanted to dig it out at that time, too, and they never did that.
Well, like I said, I was surprised that this blew up last week, because I thought the meeting that we had had this spring kind of cleared the air on all of that.
We were going to re-advocate after all the flooding went down and everything. We were gonna have another discussion. You know, we were on the same page of this, we were gonna have another discussion.
If nothing else, we just did.
Yeah, okay.
So, is everyone good for a little?
Yeah.
Okay, well.
Turn to Andy.
Make a decision by next week.
Thank you very, very much for taking time out of your busy schedule, coming and visiting.
Thank you all for listening.
Thank you. Now, moving on to bigger and better things.
Am I the only one on today?
Yep.
Pretty much.
Alright.
Alright, the first item that I've got on the agenda is to approve pay voucher number two to Midwest Contracting. This is for everything but the retainage on this project, fourteen thousand seven oh five forty-three. We paid the large portion of this project here a couple weeks ago.
Okay, it looks like everything's completed.
Just less than six thousand for the retainage?
Yes.
Alrighty, I'll make a motion to approve pay voucher number two to Midwest Contracting for Project LC three nine three zero zero six for fourteen thousand seven oh five forty-three.
I'll plug it.
Any discussion? And I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Because I thought it's probably on there, where are we at here with this?
This is West Abode on Georgia Avenue.
Ah, that's just recently completed?
The one that's recently completed.
Okay, that's, I did, that's what I thought, but I didn't wanna make an assumption, so that's the one that you're talking about. Okay, fair enough. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion approved.
As the, as the action. The second item that I've got on the agenda is to approve an application to do construction in the road right of way. This is for Mitch and Abe to hook into an existing five inch intake in the right of way in front of Al Hamerson's property. What he found is, there's an existing tile out in a parcel that he recently acquired that runs through the grove, it's filled with tree roots, so it's no longer working. So, it's, he's got standing water out in his field, as well as Al having water out of it. So, he just wants to bypass the acreage and run through private property, and then it amounts to about a hundred and fifty foot in the road right of way.
Okay, any objections at all?
I don't, he's given us a copy of his insurance to do the work.
Speed and stick the work in there.
The only thing that I asked him is being that it's in front of an acreage, to level the spoils off when he's done, instead of leaving a mound, like you would when you do a normal tile project, so.
Yeah.
And he was fine with that.
With those stipulations in it, I'm good with that. I'd make a motion to allow it.
Alright, I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Application granted.
Those are the two items that I had on the agenda. We've got, all of our sand bunkers are full to the brim. We did run, one day, the last week, where, I'm trying to think of what day it was, where's Friday, where was it a bit icy?
Friday?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday, where it was a bit icy. Uh, we didn't have all of our snow equipment on yet, but we hooked Sanders up to the trucks and just went out and cast some sand.
Something went in the ditch off the tee at Thursday.
We had a few people that went in the ditch, uh, on County K, we had one that went in the ditch down Volberdeen Hill.
Took Dan Dix's mailbox.
Somebody took Dan Dix's mailbox out.
Four times in two years, he's lost his mailbox.
Yeah, and I don't know what it is about that stretch, it's flat.
I know, they went across the center line, hit his mailbox, and out into his yard.
Ooh, and it looked like an expensive mailbox, too.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's one of those.
Precast, kinda like.
Two hundred dollar mailbox.
Yeah.
Well, it was slick yesterday morning.
Was it?
Yeah, I left town before six, and it was, I wished I'd waited a while, because the flower hadn't come from clearing yet.
Yeah, it was, it was slick, it caught us, I guess, a bit unprepared on that one.
Yeah, it was a lot, slippery than I expected, too.
Knocked up on everybody, but he did mention they did get out and.
We did get out and cast some.
And we would have sooner, but it, I know I talked to Tom, and he said, I'm getting this under on, and, yeah, there was just all those concerns you mentioned.
When they'd all left the night before, there was just a little bit of snow on the ground, and I'd talked, I was on the phone with Bruce, actually, and pulled into my acreage, and here's a pickup truck sitting out in the middle of my yard. Somebody had gone off the road and threw the ditch, and sitting out in the yard. High school kid with bald tires, so.
And driving too fast.
Yeah.
So, then we're officially ready for winter.
We are ready for winter.
Well, let's not open the door until here.
Yeah, here we go.
We're ready for four, six, ten inches.
It's gonna be a long winter.
But we've got all of our snow equipment on, on the trucks now, we're, we're ready. But with that being said, we've still got driveways that we're building, cross pipes that we're resetting. There's not a lot of tile repair left, most of that's been taken care of, some trees to remove. I mean, we've got, planning to keep us busy if Mother Nature decides to be nice to us and wait until January to snow.
That'll be just fine, I'd be fine with that.
I got, I got this feeling that December's gonna be nice.
I hope so.
I think so.
It's been so crappy.
Yeah, gotta get better.
Kind of at least average after, for the end of this week, and then into next, it's great, but it's.
Still cropping.
And there's still people who are hoping to get anhydrous and all of that.
I'm good, I'm a brick, I'm gonna remain cautiously optimistic.
Yeah.
We went from Chelsea this week up to Minnesota, that, oh my gosh, there is so many fields.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And that's happened, we've had it nice till Christmas, or relatively nice.
Right, yeah, two years ago, we cleaned the ditch until the day before Christmas.
We'll take it, we'll take it.
Thirty-two, thirty-one, thirty-eight on Friday, thirty-eight, so, and then forties in next week, so, hey.
We're getting back to close to average.
Back to the bottom.
Well, they're average, average, so, I mean, we'll take that, it's better than what it is today.
Well, they said record low overnight, last night.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a number, so.
Well, ain't nothing to say about records.
Unfortunately, we are breaking the law on one.
I'd rather have that than record snow and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Say that about rainfall, too, okay.
So, that's all I have.
Thanks. I won't keep this going any longer, I'll touch base with you about what we already have on Lubin Falls' concerns. You guys make sure, look at it, I'd say.
You guys get over that way, take a look at it.
I've been there how many times?
I mean, the reason that we're looking at is, the fields are up here, the road's about four inches short.
The road sits covered with water.
What you can see in the curves is standing water. We're trying to create a place for that water to positively drain off the right of way. That and of the sixty-six foot of right of way, forty-six is probably being farmed right now, or planted into native grass. We've got a twenty foot wide strip that's not being farmed.
And when you say you're going to, you're probably talking fifteen feet wide this long?
Yeah, I mean, you know.
Typical width of the ditch.
The typical width of the ditch, I mean, you're talking about a gradual dip down and backup. Like I said, if, for farm equipment.
You can still drive through it.
Still drive through it.
And if you happen to go off the road, you're not gonna tip over?
No. Right.
And when I visited with Adam, he was more worried about us coming in and putting that four to six foot ditch through there, and I don't think that's.
We originally looked at that similar to what is used to John Warren's house, and I don't think you'd sustain it.
I didn't understand who's that is, and as much as the water comes up and down and.
And, and the only way that you drain, I mean, she had mentioned, uh, water weeds or water hemp or whatever. But that's just gonna be as the water table goes up and down. And you're not gonna have standing water in any of the ditches, because of all the.
Before you go.
Standing water. I mean, if.
If the river runs down and dries out.
Yes, percolate was the word I was trying to think of, if percolates up through the, through the ground and it drains the exact same way.
Right. Well, to me, if.
Try to do something helps.
We're trying to be positive, that's what it was.
And that's all it was, I mean, it's.
Thank you.
Enough, but.
I'm always pretty, appreciate it. Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
So, did I hear that we had an issue with the mower again?
Yeah.
Well, you just said we've had an issue with the mower.
We have, we've had, uh, our. So, our, our new mower, which is a twenty seventeen, which is the humble, which is the humble mower, we purchased the mower from John Deere across the street, haven't had a lick of problem with the actual tractor itself. With this one, it is the Tiger mower, which has been set up for them. The hydraulic tank, instead of being out in front of the tractor, is inside the driver's side wheel well. It's bolted in inside there, and we're on our fourth hydraulic tank. It keeps cracking, in my opinion, it's too thin of material, it's too thin gauge steel to handle the vibration.
Well, that's how I heard through the grapevine, was the guy from the tra, or.
From Mid Country.
Mid Country, they're like speed dial, reorder.
Still under warranty.
So, it's, so it's still been covered under warranty, we haven't paid anything for it, it's just we have downtime.
Pretty soon without a warranty and then.
Right, what's done, yeah.
Right, well, I'm, I'm assuming, I guess, without talking to Mid Country, basically, every one of these tanks that they put on is gonna have a year warranty to it.
Oh, they will.
I, I would assume so, I mean, it's.
Crazy, they have lasted what, weeks?
Yeah, I mean, uh, we, we got one running, uh, I wanna say it was probably the beginning of June, because everything fell a month behind this year. Cracked the tank by the middle of June, they put a new one on about fourth of July, that lasted a month to August, and then the one from August made it till the end of September, beginning of October, and as we went out to start mowing back slopes, it did it again.
Can we claim the lemon law and just say, hey, we want our money back, and we wanna go for a different one, a better quality one, or something?
So, right now, I guess, Mid Country has been covering everything by warranty, and they've been dealing with Tiger directly with regards to these tanks, but, yeah, eventually.
I mean, you gotta do something, really, it costs us more in labor and stuff.
This is not a suitable product for us, you guys either need to go back to your old design.
Well, they're gonna probably think the same thing, that we can't continue to send them in tank and have the guy come up from there to. John Deere's happy that they.
John Deere's happy, though, there's not a lick of problems with that tractor.
Which we are, too.
Which we are, too. The party shows had problems with their tractor, not mower, this year, throwing codes. I mean, we spent close to fifteen thousand dollars on repairs here last month. And it still throws a code every now and then, but, I mean, that's any equipment.
Well, that was mine, was visiting with the Mid Country guy, and we were really, kinda having an issue with trying to figure out this tank, and. I didn't realize that, you know, I'd heard you say something, and.
Yeah, so, what it's doing is, basically, it's, it's cracking in the top, in one of the corners, creating a leak of, of, a loss of pressure in a hydraulic.
Hydraulic oil.
As soon as you try to put pressure to that tank, it's blowing oil out. I mean, you can still run it, but the chance of that, the chance of that crack getting bigger as you're running is pretty high. So, we've been limping by with two mowers, but, yeah, I think the next time we purchase a mower, we look at something other than Tiger. If this is the only product that they can put out, we.
I've checked to make sure that every time we put the tank on, you get a year warranty on the tank, because from my experience is, geez, after warranty is up on that machine, the repairs are no longer covered.
At least the warranty's only a year. But I guess because we've had so many problems with this thing, they've been covering it.
Because it's still under our year warranty, though, right now.
As far as I know, yeah.
You can check that out.
I'll touch base with them.
Write that out, because we want this problem corrected before a year warranty's up.
I'll get ahold of Joe.
Or something in writing, they're gonna keep putting new tank.
Right, yeah.
Tank, because.
Then we aren't gonna use it from now.
Yeah, because the warranty, yeah, next time we use it.
We're mowing right now, I mean, we're mowing back slopes, trying to.
She'll sit all winter until spring.
Right.
Right. And that's the problem you run into, is when we're no longer mowing back slopes, then it'll sit for three, four months.
Do you want me to take it south? I mean, how far south do you want me to go, Florida? I can go down there through the winter and call you, let you know it's working.
I think there's a site seat, I can come to it.
Alright.
Well, and that's once the time, and so Sandy can get to another meeting, thank you, Ben. Uh, we should approve the claims.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve claims of two hundred and twelve thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and thirty cents for general, and a hundred and fifty-four thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven even for drainage.
Is that the right number?
Is it right?
Yeah.
I had eight eighty-seven.
Oh, I had that, oh, finally, I was right.
Double check your figures.
Well, I just flipped it over on the backside of the page that had the eight seventy-seven.
Drainage, I think.
Yeah, drainage was, I had that.
Eight ninety-seven.
Yeah.
Two twelve eight seven seven thirty, is that what I said?
Yeah, alright, I don't know where I come up with eighty-seven. Alright, uh, that sounds good to me.
Okay, I second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Claims approved.
Probably, they'd like to have these up in the.
Um, we can take them in, but they need to sign a book.
Oh, where's the signature thing, yeah?
Two different ones, one for drainage, one for regular.
Alrighty, Ben.
I'll get to that, um, alright. Let's see, we have an approved liquor license for the River Valley Orchards and Winery.
Everything is in order, their ground shop is on there, they have requested also outdoor service and Sunday sales with their application, so. Looks good.
I make a motion to approve that for River Valley Orchards and Winery.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Closed, motion carries for the liquor license. Well, I am signing this, why don't you stop, take a pic of this back?
Do it on the bottom of the last page on each, for the drainage and the general.
Now, let's see, I suppose I'm there.
What are you on, Andy, sign a thing?
Right there.
Right here?
Yeah.
And I'd say I'm there. Okay, committee reports. I had no official meetings this week. Spent most of my time in a train truck.
That's good, you're getting it in.
We were here Monday night, or, excuse me, on Tuesday, Adam, for the election, helping.
Oh, yeah, I was just here.
Yeah, just helping.
Helping, I was carrying equipment back and forth.
We appreciate that, thank you.
It's a lot of work for you.
It is a lot of work for.
Those people who sit in the polls all day.
Yeah.
You know, they, they'll say they did a good job, got everything back, everything went really smooth the way it sounded.
I just, by the time I got to the ninth time up and down the steps, I was finally remembering which machine went upstairs and.
A year from now, we'll forget.
Yeah, it's like, which, is it the big one? No, that one goes down, too. Alright, I helped on Tuesday night, and then on Thursday, the seventh, I came for the canvas of the store election. That's all I had.
Thanks, Ben, for sharing me out. I would've had two other guys mad if I left the catchaway.
Alright. I didn't do anything, I did not help Tuesday night. On Wednesday, I had two meetings, I had ten o'clock in the morning in Fort Dodge, I had, um, County Social Services Quad Meeting, which is the advisory board going over what our goals are for our, um, quadrant. And then, at four o'clock, we had an Iowa Workforce Development Region Five meeting in Fort Dodge, for, which is basically the old region of Iowa Workforce, which we found out we have to keep going until July, next June, thirtieth next year. So, we'll still continue to meet with that, plus meet getting Region One going, which we're meeting every other week to get that going. So, oh, and I was here Thursday for the canvas. That's it.
So, you're required to keep both of them?
Yes, we're required to.
For how long?
Till June thirtieth next year, because July first is the official.
Okay.
Start date of the new regions, but everything has to be in place before then, to make sure that we got everything going. Yeah.
See, Peggy, I forgot, I was at the LEC on November fourth, did that mean?
He sounds unhappy.
I know.
Okay, so, yes, it's passed, uh, Monday on the fourth, had the LEC meeting Monday morning, and then Thursday, the seventh, uh, we're here in the afternoon to canvas the store elections. That's what I had officially. Okay. Anything else of notability right now?
Um, I guess I talked with Andy, Andy, I'm in his office, and they have that right of way paper done. I'm gonna run it by John before we.
Over above Fairway there?
Yeah. And the only question he had is, who, who does, who does he put on for our side? And I suggested DD thirty-five with the Board of Supervisors as trustees. I'll lay it that way. That sounds right. You know, so who has actually the permission to. You know, so who has actual the permission to go in there? Basically, it's DD thirty-five.
Is that all that, um, the trains and all that? Just somebody was asking me about that at church, too, what was going on with that, if it, if, you know? But I said, I think we were gonna put it to a bid or something like that, weren't we, is the image actually coming across?
Well, this here is, is, yeah. This here is just a paper...
Easement.
Oh, the easement part of it, okay.[1661.83]